May 5th, 2020, calling to order. All the trustees are present. I don't see Mike Patriarch, and he's probably on his way, but let's get started. Mike, let's go with, start off with your list first.
Well, I'll ask Rich, are all the people from Safe Store already on? We could handle their business if they're all on, if we're still waiting for somebody to do other things.
John Williams is on as a representative of WNA Engineering and also an owner of Safe Store. So Philip Argo with WNA Engineering is on as well.
I think everybody from Safe Store is on.
Yes.
Okay, well, let's accommodate those folks. Rich, you want to tell us what we're going to talk about here?
Well, yeah. You guys all filed the petition that I put in my folder for the meeting from Safe Store. They are proposing a three-story building, which looks quite a bit like an office building. It's an indoor storage, climate-controlled facility. We've discussed some of the architectural requirements. They have a petition in front of you, so I think it's open to questions from the trustees. On any specific items of concern or questions, curiosity about how they operate and so forth. Anybody?
I guess, can we just get a, you know, the representatives, can you explain the typical customers, typical operation? How the site operates, how it's used?
Sure, sure. So you guys, I'm sure, are all familiar with the kind of the old-school storage facilities, the caterpillar-style outside roll-up door kind of thing. And that's really, for us, a thing in the past. I mean, we're only in the business of doing what I would consider Class A, climate-controlled, internally-accessed storage. And in this case, I think you've seen the architecture plans. Philip, this is the brick building, correct?
Yes. Yes, Tom.
So we've had your architectural code, and we did it, and we've designed the building in accordance with that. It's a three-story building. We, our customers are primarily residential in nature. The project will be professionally managed. All of our projects are either managed by Extra Space or Live Storage. So we build, develop, and then basically they come in and manage it, and we retain ownership of the building. There'll be multiple loading door access points. There'll be a small 700 square feet or so office that is in there. That's just a leasing office, but the majority of our business comes from online leasing. And then people come, it's accessible 24 hours a day to the people who are our tenants through key code access. The office is staffed between generally eight and five during the day. So that's about it. There's a couple of other things that we do on all of our storage facilities, and you can check out our website. My partner and I, when we started the storage industry, we tried to come up with some things that we could do help us be more of a giver to the communities that we work in. And one of the things we do is we have an area on the ground floor of our storage buildings where, should your police chief so choose, you can use it for a police substation. So it's already pre-wired, kind of ready to go for that. And then we'll typically identify charity in the community as well, and we'll, that we'll be able to get the most benefit from a couple of our storage units. And we'll set three storage units aside for a charity in the community to be able to use to help people who may have lost their homes in a fire. Or in Baltimore, we work with a battered women's organization to store furniture and stuff like that. So, you know, we want to be a good neighbor. We want to add value to your community as much as we possibly can. And we hope that you'll find this to be in accordance with, I guess it's your, is it M1 guidelines that we're trying to match up with here, Philip?
B1. B1.
Yeah, sorry. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I own WNA Engineering, which is the civil engineering company that does all the entitlement and permitting for Safe Store. But I'm also a partner in the storage company as well. So I can answer whatever you need on that side, too.
Can I ask you? Chief would like to ask a question.
Hey, John, this is Fire Chief here, Frank Hoffman. Just a question. You said Class A storage. How do you ensure you're keeping Class A storage?
Well, I mean, I say Class A by the, I use that term as if, like, Class A office space. I mean, you build it and lease it at the highest rents, basically. You know, if someone wants to take care of their stuff that they're storing, they're going to store it with us. If someone, you know, doesn't want to spend that money and have non-climate-controlled, non-humidity-controlled storage space, they'll go rent some of the old stuff somewhere. But our clientele plays a little more for a nicer building, a nicer presence, 24-hour access. You know, the climate control, humidity control that we get.
Okay, Class A meeting is completely different for me. I'm sorry. I was thinking of Class A meeting as a fire perspective. It's a flammability of wood products and paper products and not chemicals and not, you know, things like that. So how do we make sure that chemicals and those kind of things aren't stored there?
I mean, every renter signs a policy, just like you would if you were going to rent an apartment or anything, something like that, where we have, you know, no storage of any kind of chemicals or explosives or flammables or stuff like that. It's all in individual leases. And our representatives that run these for Extra Space, I mean, they run thousands and thousands of these across the country. And are diligent with that. I mean, nobody wants to see that happen. So, I mean, it's, you know, monitored to the best of our ability.
But it's in your lease, you said?
Yeah, yes.
Are there, are you able to inspect it all?
Well, have you ever been in one of these three-story climate-controlled?
No, I haven't, and it's rather unique, and I wanted to ask you about that, but what were you going to say? Go ahead.
Some of the time, you can, I mean, the interior of the spaces, I mean, you know, they can, they can get access to them, I suppose, through a system. But it's basically inside the unit. Inside the shell of the building is essentially a system that just goes in. It has a bunch of roll-up doors and stuff that the tenants can go into their individual spaces. They would be able to, I guess, inspect based on the rights given to them under the lease, should they think that there was an issue going on there.
So you contract out the management of this? Do you stick with one company or are there multiple companies? How do you do that?
So we've done now, my partner and I have done, golly, we've probably got, what, Philip, maybe six or eight open? And we've got another dozen under construction and probably another dozen in the pipeline in some way, shape, form, or fashion. And of all the, yeah, of all those 30 that we've kind of got in process or functioning, I think Extra Space probably manages all but two or three of them. And then Live Storage has got one, and that meant one or two, and that may be it. So, you know, we stick with the folks that help us. Extra Space has been a really good partner for us. Their platform, one of the reasons why we do it, they're, I mean, Extra Space, Live Storage, and even some of the other ones. I mean, they're already set up with the advertising. The way storage works these days is essentially, you know, you want to be seen and you want to be visible. Somebody passes you on the way to work every day or, you know, on the way to the grocery store. And then they have a need for storage, and they remember that they rode by you. It's not a super complex formula. It's, you know, how many square feet of storage are within a five-mile radius relative to the population? And if it's more than seven square feet, then you got too much. If it's less than seven square feet per person, you got too little. So people ride by, they see you, they go online, they look up storage facility X road. And our partners, the management companies, you know, they're already set up on the online platforms and stuff to be able to, you know, come up on those, top of those hits. So it's just a lot easier for us to use somebody that really knows what they're doing and really already has that platform set up for the leasing side. I mean, my partner and I are, I mean, we've built, we've built a lot of stuff and designed and implemented a lot of stuff. But those guys, I mean, they know what they're doing on the leasing side.
So this is, are there other places like this around Cleveland?
Say that one more time?
Go ahead, Chuck, two people were speaking at the same time.
Yeah, I'm having computer issues. I get Frank's getting a good laugh out of it. I appreciate that. So are there other things like this in the Cleveland area? You know, I have, this is the first exposure for me. I find it interesting and probably going to do well, but just curious about where else you might be.
Philip, we got anything else going on around Cleveland right now? It's a little hard to read all of them. We got like four or five in Baltimore, a couple in Virginia, four or five in Florida. We got two in Louisiana, two in Georgia, New Jersey, Delaware, Rhode Island is two of them, probably four in Pennsylvania. I'm not sure about any more in Ohio right now, though.
Well, across the lake and the Detroit area, we have three projects going on right now. How long you guys been in business?
We started, we started Safe Store probably three years ago. We're doing about, we're doing one of these a month. So, and, you know, our, our plan is to continue to do it and be on the leading edge of, you know, what a good storage facility looks like. It's kind of ironic, your community actually will be the first one that we've done. It's like an all-brick kind of facade, because that's the architecture that your citizens and your planning require. But our prototype building is actually more of a modern kind of steel and glass panel-style building that is what we build everywhere else. But, you know, we redesigned the skin of the building here to be in compliance with your architectural flavor that you guys want to see.
So let's talk about the outside of the building a little bit. I know there was some discussion in our last meeting. It's a very attractive-looking building. I do like it. But there was some thoughts about, instead of all those wall panels, having some more windows in there. And I'm not sure, Rich, which one that we were looking at last time, if this was it or not, but there was some discussion upon that. If Josh and Gabe want to pipe in?
There's a new design in the file.
I got to go to the other computer again.
Tell them there's a new design in the file.
Hold on, Chuck.
Wait a minute.
Microphone is there.
Philip, do I have that in an email?
Yeah, I sent you the supplemental package.
There's a new design in the folder, dude.
That's it.
Yeah, I think we went back and added some windows and stuff for you, if that's what you're talking about, Mr. Chuck. I believe that would you ask about that?
So that's the picture I was looking at. If this is the latest version, I'm asking Josh and Gabe if they're okay or where we're at with this. It still has to go in front of zoning.
I think it looks a lot better. I like it.
Yeah, I think that incorporates some extra windows and has some texture on the walls between the windows.
You're saying more than that?
No, I think the one, the one on the screen now, or I think it's on the screen, has more windows than what we were looking at last time.
I think they made the changes we wanted from the last one that we talked about.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, good.
However, however, the zoning inspector says this particular window style, even though it's attractive, is not the window style from Option 5, which the trustees kind of liked from previously.
That design looks good to me. I mean, that's a presentable design for our main corridor, I believe.
I think Option 5 had the, the windows had arches on the top, I believe.
Right.
Then it arches on the top, didn't it?
No.
Those windows aren't arched at the top?
Yeah, Option 5 did have the arches at the top of the window.
Bring that back up, Chuck.
These windows are, these are square, these are rectangular windows, I believe.
They are. Is Truman on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Okay, Truman, Truman, explain the difference in these windows as opposed to Option 5, please.
Well, you're right. One of our previous versions did have arch-top windows. That was kind of an artist rendering, and when I really got to studying it, I realized that an arch-top window like that is not very conducive to this type of a commercial structure. It's really more of a residential-grade detail.
I like that.
And so I'm proposing that, I think you're going to have a better product going to a square top window. Now, we can put what's called a flat jack arch on the top of these windows to embellish them some and make them look better. But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a curved surface, it'd still be horizontal.
I think they said, I think someone just said, Truman, they felt like this looked good.
Yes, and they're backing up to the ones with arches. And again, I never really realized those went out with arches, and it's a problem. It's a constructibility issue in a commercial building to put that kind of arches in the wall.
Yeah, I like, I like this, and I feel like this will stand more the test of time as things change versus an arched window. It's a more general design that'll adapt better as things change versus an arched window.
So I guess, so the rendering we see shows two out of the four sides of the building. This is a large building, three stories. We do have residential behind it. What do the other two sides of the buildings look like? What do you envision those to be?
Well, at this stage, we hadn't designed them yet, but we can embellish them with the same level of detail if it's required. Somebody had said maybe it wouldn't be required because they're not all that visible from the back. But we can do whatever we need to.
Well, the other side would be very visible, but the backside wouldn't be. But the three sides would be very visible from the road.
Well, then, but they can obviously be the same. We wouldn't do it like an old 7-Eleven with just a frontality and blank backs and sides, you know. Wouldn't have the glass necessarily, just, but some of the other brick detailing. But maybe, maybe a lot less glass on the back, because the glass is a little problematic in a storage facility. You might, you might realize, you know, you can't have windows looking at people's boxes.
Right, and, and guys, we also, I mean, we've also got a buffer on that backside as well, so.
What kind of buffer?
I think you're just talking about space buffer.
Yeah, I know the site plan shows a buffer there, although I don't, I think that's all open field at this point. There isn't any vegetation really that's going to screen any of the buildings. So the residents on Chatham Drive and then on Woodruff, there's houses back there as well. They're going to have a good look at the building. So, I mean, we don't want the back to be ugly. Doesn't have to be as fancy as the front and sides, but a lot of people will still see the back of the building.
I think that what we would like to do is probably use the detailing, the brick detailing more on the other two sides if possible. Maybe we go from the front, from the very front of the building and wrap the right side just a little bit that you would see most predominantly from the road with some glass. And then use the details on the back end side, because we're still going to step it, and we're still going to have that contrast with it moving in and out. And then some of the brick details in the back to give it some more movement. And then we can wrap some glass around the front right corner to add to that, add to the interest of that, if you think that'll work. I don't have any problem with that.
The people at Woodruff are staring at the back of the Compadre's Plaza, which is all block, straight block with the commercial-grade doors. And then the back of the plaza next to it, which is a plain industrial back as well. So it wouldn't be out of the ordinary for that area to have somewhat of a general commercial back on that building, based on what else is up there.
The Compadre's is one story, that plaza's one story versus three.
Yeah, I agree. But it sounds like he's willing to address it a little bit without getting ridiculous. So just make the backside look presentable. It's a three-story building, it's going to be high. Appreciate that. It's a nice-looking building. I'm very impressed.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And we also don't have any issue. We generally upgrade our landscape in a pretty good bit. So Philip is actually a landscape architect by trade. We can, we can work on that buffer back there a little bit, try to get some fast-growing evergreen stuff along that backside to help out some, too.
What's the actual height of the building? Do you know?
What are we, do the top of the parapet, Philip, maybe 40 feet?
Yeah, by code, we're restricted to 35 feet. That's to the roof, roof structure. Truman, correct me if I'm wrong on that. Well, no, I understood 35 was to the top of the parapet, and that's what we show there, except at that corner. We, for right now, are still bumping that up two extra feet to give it a little bit of accent at the corner. But I think the last word we got was we're going to have to make the whole thing 35-foot max to the top of the parapet.
Is that where the building height's measured to, from the grade around the building to the very top of the parapet? A lot of times it's the top of the roof, and then the parapet's in addition.
Well, our code pretty well suggests that we're going from the general grade around the building to the top of the parapet.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's completely up to you guys. We can make it work in the 35-foot. We can pop up that corner where it gives it a little bit of architectural expression, an extra two feet right on the corner. If you have that flexibility, if not, we'll make it work in the 35 feet. Yo, I'm sorry, I'm really terribly sorry. We just, my wife and kids are not at the house, and we just got kittens. And I got, I got climbing all over me.
The challenges are working at home.
Sorry. I thought it was going to be a nice quiet meeting with the kids not here, but nothing, no chance.
So John, look at this, all right, look at this picture with the top of the roofline being extended a little bit. If I understand correctly, you're saying the 35 feet, that thing would have to come down equal with the roofline? Equal with that parapet to the side of it, in the middle of the wall, yes. Yeah, I don't like that. Rich, we got to work around that. This looks nice the way it is.
Well, you know, we do have the border zoning appeals to go to for a variant. I would imagine that with, if we put together a package, I believe the border zoning appeals could be convinced that the architectural vision, the end vision is more important than the exact height. I believe they could be convinced of that.
Good.
And we're already going to the zoning appeals, border zoning appeals? We're already going there, right?
If the trustees do in fact resolve to declare your use to be a similar use, you will be going to the border zoning appeal for a conditional use permit. And I believe they have the ability to place a condition on that conditional use permit that would allow the parapet to exceed the total maximum height. I have on our legal counsel, Jeremy Iosco, for some guidance in that. But I believe we've done things like that in the past.
Mr. Richard, whatever we need to get you, as long as it doesn't create a delay for us, for us, that's probably the most important thing, is the time. So if we need to get you an additional request or whatever it is, Philip will turn that around for you really quickly. But I think that we would like to see that happen. I think you'll, I think you'll be happier with the building if we've got a couple of feet to play with to move it up and down a little bit like that.
Right.
All right, then let's move on that train of thought there, Rich, for the zoning boards. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, Chuck.
All right. So is there anything else with this structure, gentlemen, that we need to talk about? Are we good to let this move forward? Well, I want to add one point. Gentlemen, so we're going to be sending a letter out to residents in the, just the surrounding properties to let them know that we're going to be changing, offer them the input on this. If somebody has an objection to it, we want to hear them. But based on what we've seen so far, I don't really see an issue. But anytime there's a change, then we have to take that route.
Understood.
Basically, that just means we're not going to vote on it tonight. We'll be voting on it in two weeks.
Sorry?
Basically, that just means we're going to be voting on it in two weeks. We're not voting on it this evening.
Okay, may I, may I offer a suggestion? This is Rich, the zoning inspector. Phil, I think over the next two weeks, you and I should be in good communication to be prepared to, almost immediately, let's say, the next meeting where the trustees might vote on this will be on May 19th. That's a Tuesday, and that'll be a morning meeting. Either later in the day on Tuesday or first thing on Wednesday. In anticipation of a favorable vote by the trustee, you could submit the application for the conditional use permit, and we could get you on the docket for the border zoning appeals for the second Monday, the second Tuesday in June, which I believe is June the 9th. So if the trustees were to vote tonight, that would be your border zoning appeals hearing for the conditional use permit application. So we're not really losing any time. The trustees just need to do their due diligence in making sure that the neighboring property owners understand what's happening around them and have an opportunity to speak their opinion if they have any.
Okay, I think that's no problem, and that gives us plenty of time to put the application together.
Philip, we can go ahead and get out ahead of that and get everything done and ready to go and ready to submit. So we're ready, Mr. Richard's hands, so that, assuming that the trustees approve this in two weeks, we're ready to submit it the next day or that afternoon.
Right, yeah, we can, we can have that ready next week.
Great. That's fantastic. Thank you, gentlemen.
Is there anything else from anybody, or are we done with these guys? I meant that in a good way.
I have no further questions.
I appreciate you guys moving us to the front of the agenda. I appreciate you guys embracing technology and having this meeting like this. I mean, there's so many places that we're working that it is not going nearly this smooth. And we certainly appreciate what Mr. Richard's done to help us, you know, understand y'all's rules and process. So we look forward to, we look forward to building a great building in y'all's community.
Very good, thank you, gentlemen.
See you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, let's see who drops out now. There we go. I'm getting all these things flying around on the screen. Is that it?
Hey, Chuck, how's the sound for you? Can you hear from this room okay?
Yeah, I hear you better than I did the last meeting, but I've got headphones in right now. And I'm working on a computer that doesn't have a camera working, so that's why I've got the letter C. But I get all my files over here, so it helps me out with the meeting. Can you hear me?
It sounds, it sounds much better, Mike.
We bought an external microphone. Sean from CMH got that for us for 32 bucks, so cheap and So cheap investment and glad it works.
That Sean's okay, huh?
Yes.
So when we send, as when we send letters out, can we hit those few properties on Woodruff that are going to be staring at the back of the building?
Yes. So in the corner of, um, can you guys hear me? Am I on?
Yeah, Rich is muted. Rich is talking, but he's muted.
Okay, okay. We, we should be able to develop an address list fairly easily, uh, to notify property owners. They have, uh, the ability to tune in and comment.
It says Briarwood Farm. What the heck? That's Woodruff, right?
Yes, that's Woodruff.
So those back three lots really is what those we're looking at. Josh, right? Those back three lots are you referring to?
Yeah, the one with, with your swimming pool and then the two on either side, one on either side of it.
Yeah, okay.
And so, so they'll get letters letting them know what's going on, that they can either s- send us an email or letter comments or dial into the meeting?
Actually, the one with the swimming pool is the one should be on the third. You want to go to the two to the left of the one with the swimming pool. If you look at the property layouts, if you go to the map, you look at the property layouts, they're only building on the corner lot. The one with the swimming pool is sitting to the lot to the right of it. The lot just east of it.
Patriarca here?
Hello?
I love you, Rich. Is that patriarca? Rich, Rich Patriarca.
I am.
There we go.
Josh?
Yes.
All right. So the, the property with the swimming pool is actually behind the neighboring lot. So I think you want to send it to the three lots with the swimming pool on the far right, the two to the left.
Are there two houses with swimming pools? There are.
No, there's just, well, I'm looking at Google Maps. Maybe, are you on like GIS?
No, I'm on Google Maps.
Can, can somebody present what they're looking at?
I, I don't know that I can. Oh, I can do it. I can do a Chrome tab, huh?
All right.
Okay. So I was thinking this property here.
Yes.
This property here.
Yes.
And then possibly this one.
Right, that one. I was thinking that one, the one on the left. I mean, I don't care. Some of all was, but, but you gotta get the three on the corner. So if you click on the little button on the bottom left for map, it shows you the layouts of the property in your window there. Yep. So you can see where the property line is. They're on that corner lot.
At least, at least these two then.
Those two, this one, this one and this.
I, I think those two would be sufficient. They're, they're the only ones that have any direct proximity to that property.
I'm good.
Yep.
And those are the same people who, who will get notices that there's a conditional use permit application file a, a, along with the, uh, property on Chatham.
Okay, sounds good.
What about the people across the street on Chatham?
Uh, directly across the street would be, uh, Lucky's and maybe two houses on, on the other side of Chatham.
Okay. I'm good with this. I got no further questions.
One, one of which is John Bosco and he already knows all about everything. That guy knows about stuff before I do.
Okay. Um, anything else with that? Are we good? All right, Mike, let's move on. Let's go back to you, um, the administrator off the agenda. You want to start us off?
Sure. Uh, this just come up today and I'm just giving the trustees a heads up. Um, the owners, uh, one of the owners of Pangeal Speedway called today and they're very concerned they're not going to be able to open this year at all. And if they can't, that's probably it for them. So they're, they've got to call into the health department to look into whether they can operate a drive-in theater there for the summer only. Probably, I, I don't know anything beyond that. I'm just letting the trustees know that's going to come, probably going to come up. Uh, for whatever that's worth. It's just an FYI for now. There's nothing for us.
Okay.
Can, can I make a comment on that?
Please.
Um, I, I talked to Denise Maggio today and I recommended to her that she contact the health department and lay out a program, see if they can work out a program that the health department feels will comply with all the requirements that are in place right now today. And then bring it to us at the township to take a look at.
Rich, what do we have to do? What, what do the trustees have to do?
Um, well, the, actually the, the, the trustees just have to give their blessing to grant a temporary change of use of the property. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not actually sure how to do that, but we could have them apply for a zoning use compliance certificate for a temporary use of the property for a drive-in purpose. But I, I, I would not want to do that without the blessing of the trustees, um, uh, under current circumstances. And, and I, I don't think the trustees should be put to evaluating that question un- unless it's an authority like the health department, uh, gives a blessing to their plan of operation. So I, I, that's just my opinion, but it, you know, we're, we're dealing with some unusual circumstances and I'm, I'm not sure how to handle things except to come up with unusual solutions.
Well, I just brought it up as an FYI to let the trustees know, but since you bring it up, Rich, you know, if, if they don't get her, if Speedway doesn't get a request to it well before June fourth, trustees won't meet again until second week of July, I believe, uh, third week of July. Um, so just FYI, uh, they're, they're going to lose a lot of time if they aren't ready. It must, it sounds like we're not sure about that one.
Well, if, if, if they, if they come back with a blessing from the health department, uh, for their plan of operation, I, would the trustees be comfortable if I issue a zoning certificate for the summer season for that kind of a use?
Yes.
Yes, I have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it, although I'd be assuming they would, people would tune into the audio for these movies with their car radios?
Uh, that, that is one of the stipulations that they're already aware of that, that is probably going to be imposed by the health department. Yes.
But I guess I would not want speakers placed all over blaring the audio for the movies. Other than that, no problem at all. It's going to be quieter than the race cars. So I'd be all for it.
Okay.
If there's something we would need to do to help expedite it, Rich, I'd be in favor of that too. Keeping these guys afloat during this time, whatever we can do to help them.
Okay, Chuck. Okay.
All right. Mike?
Hello?
Yeah, Paul's on your court.
Okay. Uh, Gabe and I met with, uh, Ken Filippiac and Kevin Malicek. Uh, we had a general discussion about our, a little more than a general discussion about the JED. Uh, the next step for the trustees is to agree on the properties that are going to be included in the JED. Um, since we made our original list that I submitted to the trustees, it was almost a year ago now. Uh, there's been some property owner changes and some changes and we really should review the list of properties. And then, no, at first list, I just went through and listed options, as many properties as I thought we could. We've also looked at that, well, let's include this, that, that, we got it, we, that property, that property in that building. We have to think, we have to look at this list now in terms of, we have to go to these property owners and ask them if they want to join, join the JED. Um, we're not at the point of being ready to ask them yet. We haven't sharpened our pitch and our benefits. But I'm, I'm suggesting that we keep that in mind when we go through the list, that whoever we, we decide we like in the JED, we have to go talk to. And with that, I'd like to have a special meeting, uh, so the trustees could just devote their time to the JED and the properties. Cause I, I think that could be a very involved discussion. So do we want to set a special meeting for this? There is, there isn't necessarily, see, like in the next couple of weeks, uh, we just need to keep the pace moving. We agreed with Benner. We have everything done. They have this done by the end of the year.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll pick a date and send it out. Okay.
You want to pick like at least two days?
Pardon me?
Can you pick two day, uh, two options?
Sure. Will do. You'll get it tomorrow. Alrighty, um, yesterday we did, uh, ATVs and enforcement. And I'll see that video on Facebook today, that guy trying to get into Bill's backyard.
Yeah. So did that guy get a ticket on the video?
Pardon me?
That guy, that was on the video I saw. Did he get a ticket or did he get a courtesy ticket? Do you know?
I don't know. I just saw what I saw on Facebook.
So I, this thing is a pain in the ass.
We say that about you all the time.
So we spoke about, um, bringing it up for this meeting, perhaps doing, um, us funding a special patrol down the road to follow up on this. Am I echoing?
Yes. I, I think you have both. Yeah, you have both. There you go. How about that?
Am I echoing now? Uh, my apologies. I'll try to stick to this computer. All right. So we spoke, uh, John, about bringing this up. Is there any interest in seeing what it would cost to fund a follow-up on this?
Absolutely. Yes. Uh, I've heard a lot of good feedback, um, from people on this. They're happy it was done. Um, a lot of stories about them getting cut off as they drive down the road in these four-wheelers, ATVs cut in front of them. Uh, mashing that video from the highway patrol right after they go underneath the railroad bridge on twenty. You can see they cut somebody off, um, you know, early in that video. So I, I think it was a great thing. I was a little disappointed. They gave out a lot of warnings, um, instead of tickets, but, uh, they're the law enforcement people. They know what they're doing. So I would definitely be, be interested.
Well, now that they've done the courtesy tickets, they can give real tickets for the second time.
Yes.
Got to hit them where it hurts.
Yeah.
Gabe, you good?
Yeah, I mean, has the sheriff said that they needed one, uh, needed funding from us to continue doing it? I don't, that's not questioning.
We haven't got that far, but I'd like to, I'd like for us to push to have a follow-up on that. Maybe let, let them figure out when they want to do it. Um, but if it came down to us having to throw something in the pot, I would, as long as it's, you know, as long as it's responsible, I wouldn't mind throwing something in the pot to sweeten it, to get it done. Because I mean, we all know, we've been campaigning and hearing it from the same people on Bohal in the other areas. And, and when that thing went on Facebook, I just saw a guy who lives down the street from me here on Pebble Beach is saying they're riding over there too, down the railroad tracks, uh, between Pebble Beach and the pines. So, um, I mean, I don't get it where I live because there's not nowhere to ride over here, but, uh, you know, and Jeremy don't get it where he lives because he's over in, in the high rent district, but, uh, but the rest of us, uh, we get it, you know, so.
I, I get it all the time on my street, um, all hours of the day, um, late at night. So, um, I know the, the woman that emailed Gabe over on Bohal, um, I've emailed her a couple of times. She's emailed me. She has a list of when she hears them on the tracks that she's going to send to me. Um, the sheriff's department asked me to start a list of when I hear them on my street. So I'll continue to do that and then send them information periodically of, of when we hear them. And we see, you know, it, it'll be obvious if activity picks back up, um, and we can revisit it. But I think, uh, I'd be all for another enforcement effort. And if we had to, to kick in, um, then, then so be it. I talked to Larry Harpster and he said having the helicopter, um, on their side made all the difference. Apparently they did something similar a week ago, uh, the previous weekend without the helicopter. It was not as successful. Uh, having the helicopter, they were able to track the people who ran, um, and that made all the difference.
Good. Mike, can you follow up with the sheriffs and see if, uh, they're planning anything down the road, what they can share with us? Tom, we, we appreciate all that they did. Would like to see more. Okay.
Okay, will do.
Mike, do you have on the agenda? I don't see you having anything else. Oh, Gabe's going to write the article for the newsletter this time. Is there anything else?
I have two more things I added today, just real quickies.
Okay, go.
Hang on.
Rush pickup?
That's under Bill's, uh, that's, that's under Bill's agenda. I had it on mine and I took it off because Bill had it on his. I just want to let you know that I, I put in my report that the closing of the Haddon sale was June twenty-first. It's May twenty-first. Uh, I corresponded with Gary Black over beside today and talked to, uh, Neil Conway to get the final paperwork done and tidy it up. So that when the, when May twenty-first rolls around and we're done with the zone, rezoning appeal period, we can close the sale and file everything with the recorder's office. So this, that came up today. And movie night, uh, I, I guess I quit my report. I'd tell you about movie night tonight. I actually thought about doing it the next meeting because we've got time. But we signed an agreement to have the movie night, uh, to get a fifty percent re- uh, refund. We have to cancel by July tenth. To get a one hundred percent refund, we have to cancel by June twenty-fifth. So I'll plan on bringing this up to the June fourth meeting to see if you want to make a decision then or roll the dice into July.
I think we'll know more by then. So it'll give us a better picture. Yeah.
Yeah, I hope we know more. It seems like a lot of communities are canceling summer events already though.
I'd say we hope to know more by then. Okay, that's all. Chuck.
All right. Thank you. Um, what do we got here? Let's go on to zoning. Mike or, uh, Rich and Harley, what do you guys got?
Rich.
Harley, do you have anything?
Um, nothing special. Uh, zoning permits, um, very few complaints have come my way. But our permit applications don't seem to be slowing down. Um, it, you know, Rich and I are, are splitting them and, uh, I think we're getting a pretty decent amount. And that's really all that I've got.
Um, just on, on that front, let me tell you something. Most of the online zoning permit applications we are getting have problems and, and we're having problems communicating with people, uh, at, at least I am. But it, it's all working out. Uh, you know, eventually we're getting everything done. But, um, it, it's quite cumbersome with our system for the online permit applications. When, when we get our software up and running with SmartGov, I, I think some of this is going away, but the, the problem is residents don't seem to understand that they have to submit some kind of a site plan and some details a- about what they're building and where they're putting it on their property. But, you know, we'll get there.
Do we need to change? Okay, Rich? Is, wouldn't that be easy enough to? Is, wouldn't that be easy enough to have Nick put a pop-up that says, when they, so walk me through, when somebody goes online, they fill out the application, do they hit a submit button right there online?
Well, I, I think they can hit a submit button right online, yes.
Okay, so why don't we have Nick build in a pop-up that when they click submit, a pop-up will come up on the screen that says, "You must submit a site plan with this application," so that they will be made aware when they submit their application, that they have to do that.
Well, you know what, Gabe, we, we don't have to go crazy, have a Nick redesign the website for now. Because when, when we get this SmartGov totally implemented, it's, it's going to take care of that process. It's going to override it.
I, I don't think, I mean, I think.
Right to a portal. Right now, the, the problem is, um, I, I have emailed fairly quickly after people have submitted their application. I've emailed them saying, "Here's what we need from you." And they're not getting their emails, because they have these spam protectors, and they're sending my emails to spam. So, we, we, we just had a case today where I sent a gal the first email back on March 13th or March 12th, I, I forget which day. And, and she never got it, and she never checks her spam, so she, she was unaware that I was trying to communicate with her. I thought she dropped her idea to go ahead with her project.
Ideas will be simple. I'll talk to you, convey it to Nick.
But, but did too much effort to make a quick phone call to some people, or no?
Well, uh, that's, that's how I wind, wound up today, uh, because she sent an inquiry in that, that went to Mike. And she, he sent it to Karen, somebody sent it to me, and, and I figured, maybe I'd better call this gal. So I called her and she was like totally unaware that, um, I had tried to reach her by email. So, it, it's just some of the growing pains that we have to go through right now. And you know what? That kind of a situation could have happened, whether I was working in the office or from home. Um, so it's just something we have to deal with, with the online process, which I think is going to be a little bit easier when we make this transition to SmartGov. Um, and we're, we're on the way, uh, Harley and I are conference calling with their reps, um, like twice a week on Wednesday and Friday morning. Uh, we are in the process of uploading all of our application forms. It, and we, we, we think we have the software hitches worked out where we could deposit, uh, documents into a repository. Their reps can go into that repository, take that information and start translating it into their system. So, we're, we've got a workable process going, and, and we're on our way. Um, two things I, I wanted to mention, I got an inquiry from some gal who, um, wanted to know what was necessary for permitting a childcare at 370 Blackbrook Road. And, uh, I, I, I answered her inquiry. It was a voicemail that I got, so I, I called and left her a voicemail that said, "Well, listen, we have some serious discussion to be had, because a childcare is not a listed use for 370 Blackbrook Road, which is a white industrial zoning district." Uh, haven't heard back from her. In the meantime, I got another inquiry for a property at 300 Temple, which is at the intersection of Temple Avenue and, uh, Route 44, uh, going north toward the Headlands. Um, what, what the heck has been there? Some, some pump manufacturer or something has been in there. But the guy who made the inquiry runs an indoor auto dismantling operation, uh, which is not a listed use for the white industrial district that, that property is zoned as. Um, I'm, I'm getting some details from him. Um, but I don't know if I had the opportunity yet to put any of that in my report folder. Anybody see anything on that in my report folder? Probably not.
No, I did. I saw stuff. I looked at them both, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay. So he, he gave me a written, uh, description of his operation. I asked him some questions. I, I probably didn't get a chance yet to post his answers in there, but, uh, he's got a pretty quick turnaround. He, he brings vehicles in, uh, parks them on the property, takes them inside, does the dismantling, puts his parts into inventory, and he sells basically online, and it's foreign car parts. Uh, right now, he's been specializing in BMW, and within a couple of days, he gets rid of the car shells, uh, sends them off to a scrap dealer. So, his operation is basically inside, and he's got some vehicles parked outdoors for a few days at a time. Um, I, I'm not sure whether to recommend that he actually petition the trustees at, at this point in time for a similar use, and then get a conditional use permit, um, without talking to you guys first. So, for that kind of a location, uh, what are, what are your thoughts? Should I go ahead and tell him he, he can go ahead and submit a petition? And, and, and see how you guys are impressed, once you get a chance to meet him and understand his, uh, his operation in a little bit more detail? Or would you rather just forget?
Rich, what, I'm not opposed to hearing it out. I'm a little concerned about the vehicles that are going to be sitting around. What's the address of the property?
300 Temple.
It's right at the corner of Temple and State Route 44, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you can't see the property from State Route 44 because of the, the vegetation.
Well, there's vegetation and, and everything, I, I do believe on the property.
Yeah, yeah. I don't have a problem if you have them submitted, and I don't see an issue.
Okay.
The, the lady or the gentleman you talked about, the childcare on Blackbrook, know that there is a medical facility right next door?
Well, uh, she, I, I don't think she didn't, but, uh, you know, she, uh, she does now.
Okay.
Actually, I had a question about that. Isn't that written in that they can't be within so many feet of child daycare centers, schools, et cetera?
Right. Which, which kind of tells me, I mean, if, if the rules for the marijuana dispensary is that they cannot locate it, locate within so many feet of a daycare or a childcare facility, then the converse is true. If a daycare or childcare facility wants to locate within 500 feet of a medical marijuana dispensary, I, I think all bets are off, that they can't do it.
Well, there you go. Good call, Harley. Didn't even think about that.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that's probably the reason I haven't heard back from her, because I, I kind of shared that philosophy in the voicemail I left her, and I haven't heard back. So, in my book, that's a good thing.
Okay, um, Harley, how's the zoning software coming along?
Um, I think it's been a little rough for me, these meetings that we're having. Um, uh, but from all of the discussions that have taken place thus far, um, I feel pretty confident that they hear our needs. And, um, I think that they are moving towards that goal. Um, we have, I actually have a laundry list of things to do for them. Um, I need to get some documents submitted for them, which I intended to do this previous weekend, and, um, it got away from me. So, that I will be doing tomorrow. Um, but I believe Rich has probably had more conversation with them as of late. Um, yeah, unfortunately, the meetings are taking. And so it's been a little more difficult for me.
Lost you there, Harley. You said the meetings are taking, and then you went blank for a while. What did you say?
I'm, I'm so sorry. Can you, can you hear me now?
I can.
Good. Sorry, that was commercial. Um, the, uh, meetings are taking place while I'm at home alone with Adeline and Avery, uh, the two and four-year-olds. So, it is a little bit more difficult for me to be as attentive as Rich is. So luckily, we, there are two of us, uh, present, and they are recording the meetings, so I'm able to go back and, uh, the information shared. But, yeah, I, I feel, I feel pretty good about what they've, uh, done so far. Right now, they are working on establishing our, um, parcel list. Um, and there is a concern with whether or not they are able to pull directly from Zone Pro due to the file types. Um, so they need to pull from, well, the worst-case scenario, they have to pull from the auditor, and then we will have to do a manual data entry, um, to perfect the records, because our records are more, um, detailed and more accurate than what the auditor has on their website, especially as it relates to units.
Oh, I, let me chime in on that. Um, our, our last conversation with them was last Friday, and we, we had a discussion where we, we discussed how they are going to import our property data. That's, that's like our parcel-by-parcel property files. And, um, we, we said that we think we need to import that data from Zone Pro. So, before the end of the day on Friday, I sent them both an Excel spreadsheet and a comma-separated value file of all of our property with all of the goddamn fields, and, uh, told them, "If this is what you need, go to it, baby, because here it is."
That was a technical term, wasn't it?
It was, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so you guys, does zoning have anything else?
No.
Alright, let's go to fire chief.
Okay, uh, mainly the, right now, our runs are down, and I think, uh, I know you, uh, on the chart you saw where we've got less. But, uh, even with the, the less runs that we're doing, I, I did a head-to-head from last year. And the month of March, uh, we were 85 transports, which we only built for transports anyways, we're 85 transports. And, uh, last year, we, I'm sorry, this year we were 85, last year we were 109. So, you know, we're down 24 transports. But in dollars that, they, that runs about $300 a call is what we actually end up collecting, uh, collection rate on that. So, we're, we're going to be down about $7,000, $7,500 is what it looks like. I did, uh, Medica, I ran their numbers to see how our, our collection rate is right now, head-to-head from last year. Um, where we are right this minute from where we were this minute last year, we're only down $3,000 in collections. So it takes a, we're about a month behind, and then we'll see in about a month how we're doing on collections and how much we're actually, how much revenue we've actually lost. Um, we did get $11,000, $11,400 deposited, because we transport Medicaid patients, so from the CARE Act, who, who gave us that. Uh, has to be spent on either lost revenue or, uh, COVID-type transports of some, you know, whether it's equipment or things like that that we need, or even overtime, which we've had some overtime that was inevitable, because we platoon the guys. And the way we platoon them, we had like an extra guy at one station, but not enough at the other, and we really couldn't move them around, just because we're not letting that happen. So that did create, uh, a few, a few overtime shifts also. So coming up with the $11,000 to offset what they've given us is not, doesn't seem like it's going to be a problem. We should be able to do that pretty easily, and probably will, will probably apply for more, um, from that same act to pay some, some more extra overtime as this goes on, so.
How long is that good for, chief?
Which is what good for?
The money. Does it end at a specific period of time, or?
Uh, what they gave us right now, what they up-fronted, uh, is, is going to, is just for, uh, uh, that's just for the March and April. Okay, right, what they've given us right now. But as it goes on, it's going to go on through December, is my understanding, so.
Yeah, the act goes through December 31st.
There we go. Jeremy would know, he's, they're up on that a lot. I mean, he's, he's got a whole webpage dedicated to that, so we can ask him if we have those questions. But right now, the head-to-head, this is kind of odd, and I don't know, maybe Jeremy picked up on this. Their, their financial impact for the initial CARES Act that they gave to us for Medicare, um, they're looking at comparing March 1st through the 31st of 2019 to, eh, March 15th to April 14th of this year. So they're not, we're doing four weeks to four weeks, but not head-to-head the same four weeks. I'm not sure why they're doing it that. I don't know if you saw that, Jeremy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure either. I think it's a, like a two-week lag from, I, because I think they're going from the beginning of the shutdowns, instead of the beginning of the year.
Okay, and that's, in that period, those numbers that I gave you are almost identical anyways. By running those two periods head-to-head, it was like almost the same amount of transports, and it's still roughly $7,500 will be down in transport money. So revenue loss there, and then, um, and like I said, we do have a handful, I have to go through them. But I think, right now, it's like nine shifts that we've had over the almost two-month period that we had to shift people around, so that we'll get, that we can get reimbursed for some of that overtime, too. Okay. Now, um, going on with the CV1, we had that out. That was our command vehicle. We had it. This, the EMA wanted that as a backup radio system while this was going on. I guess they decided it's not going to be as bad as they thought it was going to be, so they shipped it back to us. So, I kind of liked it out there, because we didn't have to, like, do the maintenance on it for that time period, or put gas in it, or, you know, they, they, it just sat out there. But, well, well, now we got it back, so it's, we'll be responding it if anybody needs it. Um, the new engine's in service at Station 2. Uh, the guys have been running it. They love it. It's, it's, it's a nice engine. It's perfect. Um, repair work is still being done at Station 3. All the scaffolding's in place. Uh, they've gotten, uh, they're working on the caps right now, and the deciding will go up last, but it's, it's moving along now, so that, that's good. Squad's still out for paint. We've got, oh, we did get, uh, the Firehouse Grant. We got, uh, $4,000-some-odd dollars. I remember what the exact amount, exact amount is. But we did get extrication equipment from the Firehouse Grant. Uh, I made that announcement last week, but now, uh, we, we do have the stuff in place. We're going to be buying the equipment, and they're going to be paying them directly, so we're going to end up getting extrication equipment for that. Um, we also got, and this is an interesting thing, that a guy, and I hope I can say his name right, Jagdish Mehtala Metfla. He, he, Dizer Corporation here on Manner Avenue, last year they gave us $1,000 for equipment. This year, he, he sent us a check for $2,000 for the K9 Fund. Gordon went over there the other day and got pictures taken with him. We'll be posting them on Facebook with this guy and the, and the K9. And, uh, I have to call him, but he mentioned the K9, or to Gordon, that he wants to take over the K9 Fund for us and just pay whatever the K9 expenses are, which we'll have to talk about that. But if he wants to do that, I'm all for it, but, yeah.
That's awesome.
So, that, last year, I think we budgeted about $4,000 for the K9 burn, the tighter. That's what he wants to do, yeah. Is Dizer Corporation, it's a software, no, it's in, software, yeah. He's Dizer Corporation. It's a software co- no, it's in software. Yeah. What is it?
He, 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 he is a software company. Yes.
Where is it?
It's right on Mener Avenue in the plaza that sits back on, on this side.
He's in, we own, we own Collins Emerald, Emerald Plaza.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Wow. It's awesome.
So, yeah, so like I said, that's, I'm not really sure why, but he just decided he wanted to start donating to the fire department and we're we're very, they definitely appreciate it.
Can we do a resolution of appreciation for him?
Oh, of course. Absolutely. That's how I was. Yeah, you beat me to it. Let's get something for next time.
Okay.
Just adding something general for his continued support of the people township, fire department and the K nine unit.
This is the second year he's donated.
Yeah, just word it that way, Mike, you know?
Hey, you know what, chief? I got a contact to over at the, uh, at the Gazette. They might wanna do a little something with that. They're always looking for human interest stories like that.
Okay. Yeah. Like, like I said, Gordon went over and got pictures with the, the dog and his family and they're, they're nice people. So.
I'd say so.
Yeah. I guess in general that's, you know, we've been getting, it's just, uh, the community's just been great while this, through this whole thing that's going on. I mean, we've been getting food donated and, and people stop by and, you know, drop, we've had people drop off PPE. Um, especially like N ninety-fives, road department gave us some too, but, and then a couple of the industries gave us N ninety-fives. People have just found them in their garage and brought them over. Yeah, it's like, you know, they'll be, oh, I had this box N ninety-fives. They knew you guys need them and they brought them over. And, and you know what? And they, and they're useful and they're, they're good for us. So, you know, the community's been just really supporting us really well during this whole thing. So that's all.
I got a bunch of stuff in my garage, but you're gonna have to send one of the, uh, the trucks from the road department over for me to unload all of it for you.
Well, like I said, if it was PPE, if you've got a bunch of PPE, I, I, I know we have uses for it. So. Yes.
Have him fix me one of the pictures or email from the photo shoot. Yes, I will.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, chief. Thank you. Um, looks like we've got, uh, I think we're all done, huh? Oh, did I miss somebody? All right. All right, Billy, go ahead.
Okay, we got word from the, uh, Riverside High School that they are not going to allow any of their clubs to participate in any extracurricular activities, including our brush pickup. So if we decide to go ahead with it as scheduled, the service department can do it, assuming we are all back to work then. Um, you know, the plan is to, to have everybody back on June first. This is scheduled for June eighth. If we're all there, we can do it, but it's not gonna be a one day event like it is when we have the clubs. It's going to take us, it might take a week. It, it all depends on how much stuff is out there. We would be able to, to take the loader out and load into the four dump trucks that have the TARP systems on it. There wouldn't be any trailers going out. So, uh, we can do it if we wanna go ahead and and, and schedule it this year. Uh, it's just going, it's not gonna be a one day event. So. We're good, we're good with it?
Bill, the reason you said when we're all back is because you're talking about two people in a truck, right? Is that why?
Well, no, we would have four trucks out in the loader. There's, and that's five guys right there and we don't, we're definitely four guys on a crew right now. So that's, that was part of the reason. Yes.
Do you guys, you said, is June one your goal for, uh, having everybody back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's the goal.
Okay. Yeah. Sounds good.
Thanks. So.
I think residents like it. I mean, if it's
Absolutely.
Not as, you know, if it's not terribly painful, I say we do it.
Residents expect it.
Okay. Yeah. We'll just have to maybe let them, let them know somehow that it's not going to be a one day event. Um.
Could we break it up into, um, at least?
East side, west side?
Yeah. Do it. So you say east side, you're gonna be this, this three days. West side, you'll be this two days or whatever, you know? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll do that. And however we wanna put the announcement out, I'll have that scheduled for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, there's gonna be a newsletter coming out towards the end of May.
Yeah, we can figure it out by then.
Yeah. All right. That's what we'll do.
But are you talking, you talking the crews all together though? Is that what we're talking about here? On June first? What if the social distancing thing is still in place? Where you can't have two people in a vehicle, then what are you doing?
Well, I think everybody, it's one per vehicle still, right? For the brush.
I know, but that's not said anywhere. That's just something he did, right?
Bill, for the brush pickup, are you still gonna do, it'd be one guy driving a truck and one guy driving the loader, right?
Yes.
There's no stipulations on that, I don't believe. I've seen multiple, uh, municipalities with two or more people driving around in a vehicle. That's just something we're doing.
A lot of departments are doing it. The other townships are doing it, road departments.
I know. I'm just saying that I don't think it's stick, it's not stationed, it's not laid out. I think that's just something we're doing, but.
Well, okay. Well, that wasn't my impression. My, my neighbor has a business. He's a landscaper and with his business, they were directed, you can only put one person in a vehicle. And so he's limited on jobs. So he can only have one guy drive there. That's why I made that statement. If that's not the case, um.
Well, I mean, I just like, for instance, I saw Mener. I mean, I saw them, uh, police, I just saw two of them in the same vehicle riding around sitting.
Concord's buying two vehicles so they can have their guys follow each other around and keep buying this vehicle.
Yeah, it sounds like from the mayor's and manager's meeting, it sounds like a lot of communities are doing the one per truck. But I mean, here we, it's May fifth, so we got a ways to go.
Yeah.
Let's check in next meeting and see where we're at.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll look into it. I, I don't know that it's an actual regulation that you have to have one per vehicle. I think it is what everybody's doing, but I'll, I will, I'll double check that before next meeting.
Thank you. All right, Richard, what else you got?
Now, cause you called him Richard.
So we got, um, the lawn and garden awards. If we're going to, uh, do that again this year, I would, I would like to see it. Last year, I, I didn't think it was, had the enthusiasm last year that it had the, the year before. Um, you know, I, I would like it if the trustees each picked a property each month in the service department, then picked one. Um, instead of, it just seemed like service department was, was picking two or three a month last year. So if we, uh, and do we wanna do this May, June, July, August, or just June, July, August? What, what's your thoughts?
I would say June, July, August, because that's when the decorations all get laid out in, in May. So June gives you a chance.
Okay. June, June, July, August, and I will, uh, I will remind everybody that we, you know, we need your fix and, uh, I will still go and, and deliver the signs and, and take pictures. Um, okay, I just wanna.
Sorry for letting you down there, Billy.
Oh, it's all good. We'll get it.
We'll do better.
Um, so the, the brush drop off down at the service department is kinda leveled off. Uh, that first couple of weeks we were, we were slammed, but it's, it's kind of leveled off to where it has been in the past. So, um, I'm happy about that. And, uh, tomorrow we're gonna have that, uh, you know, the, the first birthday celebration parade for a house over on Garfield, the boy's fifth birthday. Um, chief says he'll have a couple, couple of his trucks and we'll have some trucks and, uh, I'm sure that it'll, it'll be all over Facebook, but, uh, maybe it'll be nice. So, and, uh, that's all I've got. I'll, I'll give my, uh, road projects update for the public meeting. So that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, we're done here a little bit early. Is anybody, am I missing anybody? Mike Patriarch, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything this time. We kinda finished up the audit and that. So, um, we're on my end.
Audit went well, I trust.
Yeah, we just had one little, couple of little stupid things, but we corrected them.
Okay. Um, Mike, I see you've got the township hall open. Can you talk about that a little bit? Uh, what it says with conditions? Explain what the conditions are and how, how it's going?
I am planning on talking about that during my report at the public meeting, but we just unlocked the doors. Um, people are allowed to walk in. Can't have more than ten people in the building. Uh, we do wipe down the doorknobs when people leave. Uh, it, somebody flipped a switch this week and said zoning is open because we've had a steady stream of people yesterday and today coming in and calling with zoning issues. And a couple of, the month before that, yeah, it was routine. Yeah, you'd get some here and there, couple, couple a day. It, it just was a steady parade of people yesterday and today, either calling or coming in. So that's all it is. Um.
So how are you handling with zoning then? Cause those guys are both working from home, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
So how are you handling when people are coming in? What's, what's, what's the process? What's going on?
Well, first there's really good coordination between Karen and Rich and Harley. So she's really handling everybody at the window. Um, Rich and Harley, their voicemails get transferred directly to their phones, their cell phones. So they get their voicemails, uh, instantly. Uh, then of course email works the same way. Uh, I know they're emailing some of the permits now instead of requiring people come in and pick them up. Uh, we'll mail them what they want. Uh, we've got a collection of per, live permits here that people can pick up when, ever now. But up till now, they've been emailing the permits. So I, I think it's been working fine, but it does require a lot of coordination with Karen.
So when are we looking at bringing, um, bringing these guys in? Start rotating them back in?
Uh, at this point, it is their, to me, as far as I can tell, it's their choice. Um, Harley's pretty limited because she needs a childcare center to open up in order to come to work, like an awful lot of people. Uh, and Rich, I know has some health concerns and prefers working at home. It's not a big inconvenience. It's a little inconvenience. Uh, certainly isn't gonna last, I don't know, more than a month. I at some point, the governor's gonna say, okay, I have offices. You can all go back to normal. But at this point, I'm comfortable with allowing it to be the employee's choice whether they come in or not.
Okay.
Harley comes in on the weekends, usually when nobody's around to do some of her paperwork and printing and that.
And, uh, general office open, is actually technically open back up on Monday for general office work, but they're still strongly encouraging if people can work from home to work from home. It sounds like.
Open the building, but, you know, I, I think a lot of businesses are still working from home. My son, Harris, he's still working from home.
Yeah, the vast, vast majority is still working from home if they can.
Okay. Uh, so we're done here. Is there anything else? We could, we could adjourn or close this meeting and then start the next one at seven thirty, be on time?
Right.
Guys, we'll take a quick break?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna close this meeting. We'll be back here at seven thirty to start the next.
Thank you.
Log in for the meeting or the same one?
No, it's a different login.
Well, please log in for the meeting because that's going to be a separate recording. That's the recording we're gonna keep for our minutes as a record of the meeting, cause that's what we always do, that recording of the public meeting. That's why we have to set this up for two different meetings so that we separate the public meeting for our minutes.
Okay.
Okay. See you in a few.
See you in a few.